All right, good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting, Monday, April 28th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
In the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visible, and to the routine justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Tekeeta, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Dentz.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Galloway.
Here.
All right, let the record show, Mr. Boraski had a commitment, and Mrs. Mullen's father passed away, so she's not going to be with us either. She wanted me to make sure I made that announcement. We're going to begin with Waste Management's presentation. Oh, I do. Okay, thanks. No.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Patty Barthel. I work for Waste Management in Public Affairs. So I've been working with the local Waste Management divisions on the communication plan that we're sending out and we're working through with the residents to convert over their daily, or sorry, their weekly trash collection to a cart system, which is automated. We took a close look at the ways in which people receive information, the way they receive details that they need to know. We put together four separate mailing pieces that are going directly to everybody's household over the course of the process, along with various social media, websites, and along with Levittown Now as an outlet for getting information out to the residents. As you recall, back in March, the end of March, Waste Management, in fact, Mr. Jones, who is here tonight, presented information that we were going to be slowly working through some changes in the collection system that would make it safer and more efficient, not just for us, but also for the community. That was on March 24th. That particular meeting was also recorded by the township and is still available on the township website at a link, if anyone would like to see that presentation. As a result of that, that evening, Mr. Jones also provided a copy of what's known as the special announcement letter that residents also received by direct mail. Followed up to that, that night, it was also reported on by Levittown Now through the reporter Tom Sowfield, who provided information out to the public about what transpired during the board meeting and what we were intending to achieve. Excuse me. Along with the special announcement talking about the upcoming changes to the routing, along with the use of carts now for the collection system, we sent direct mail postcards, and I have a copy of that here, that those of you who are involved with the system or currently or will be converting to carts have already gotten in the mail. That provided very specific days of when your collections will occur. Although all the residents are not having their collection days changed, we sent a postcard to everyone just as a reminder of what day your trash goes out, what day is your recycling, along with what day we will be picking up bulk items each and every week. Those items went out already by mail. We have two other pieces that will be going out within the next three to four weeks. The first one is going to be another postcard saying our carts are coming. They will start being delivered. The tentative date for delivery to begin at this point is going to be, now I missed it, I'm not finding it, May 28th, correct? May 28th. So the carts will be delivered at the end of May, so that folks have a chance to look at them, figure, once they get another brochure telling them what to do and how to do it, how to use your cart, how to place it. We will not begin using the carts until June 28th. So we've looked at the system, or if you will, the process of getting all of the residents involved or informed about how this all works over the course of three full months. It wasn't just, let's change everything at one shot and we're starting in two weeks. So we tried to reach everybody where they are, whether it was direct mail, again, whether they watch the township board meetings, or potentially go onto Levittown Now, or they're on social media. So we tried to do as best we could in getting as much information out to as many residents within the township. You will have in front of you not only the basic timeline and the communication outreach rollout, where we stand, what we have yet to accomplish, but also a copy of what we call our FAQ, the Frequently Asked Questions, because we know these are the types of questions. In other communities where we started cart service, what types of things do people want to know? So it could be something like, well, this cart's too small, I need a bigger cart, or I need another cart, can I do that? That answer is yes. That answer is addressed on, or the question is addressed on here also. Why can't I bag my recycling? Why should I put my recyclables loose in the cart? We've addressed that here, along with other information they're going to be getting in the future, but these are similarly, you know, the types of questions we normally get in the very beginning from residents who are converting from either a container or bag system, if you will, of putting their trash out, to using the carts for collection. We can take questions. I have other representatives here. I know you're familiar with Mr. Jones, but Don Mack is our site manager for the Bristol Hauling Company, if you will, our location that's actually doing the services on behalf of Waste Management. He is our district manager. And then we also have Mr. Mike Ramos next to him. He is the senior district manager. Mike oversees multiple collection companies, hauling divisions, as we would call them. So they both have come out tonight, in case there's any questions that we can answer at this point in time.
All right. I want to start by making sure, I've received a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. I see there's a few names here on Liberty Drive, so I'm sure they're here for this very reason. I used to live at 245 Liberty Drive. This isn't something that Falls Township asked for or wanted. We were not given a choice in this. This isn't something that we have any say in. So I want to be clear on that. This isn't something that we just agreed to do. We have no choice but to do this. I guess it was the 18th, I received the first postcard, or I was away for that weekend. When I came home, my postcard was there telling me my new trash day was today. But so far, your communication has been terrible, because that same postcard directed people to go to our website, to the map, which wasn't updated.
That's correct.
We, Falls Township, had zero communication from Waste Management about this, except through our PR people. So that's terrible. I mean, I don't know how you're going to fix that now, because I know that my house on Independence Drive had trash pickup change from today to tomorrow. But last night, everybody, half the neighborhood had their trash out already, because they didn't get the memo.
If you have someone that is normally picked up on a Monday, that they are now Tuesday, they will be picked up tomorrow.
No, I get it. My point is that your communication was terrible, that this thing, you keep telling us you're going to do this, you're going to do that. Mr. Jones was here, said we're going to have town hall moodings, we're going to do this. You've done none of that, but you're jamming this down our throats. Like, you didn't tell us that in next week we're going to be changing our trash pickup days. No one was prepared for this, this week.
The hardest part, one of the hardest things that we had to honestly overcome was the fact that so many address lists do not match. So the address list that we got, the mailing list from the township, was not included every property, not just residences. So we attempted to mesh that into what we knew of the collections that we were picking up, along with some other database lists, to make sure that we had the full address list of those that were going to be falling under this change in collection. The change in collection is not only to just benefit Waste Management, but it benefits the community itself.
No, it doesn't. It benefits Waste Management, because you don't have people in trucks anymore that you can't hire, because you can't get people to do the work. It doesn't benefit the township at all. Not only are the people, like here, that live in a townhouse, what are they supposed to do with these cans? Are they going to drag them through our living room to get them out front?
We've already talked to these folks before they came in. They asked-
Man, no you didn't.
Yes, they just asked.
Out front, you did.
Yes, correct.
So what are they going to do?
Well, again, we talked to them and discussed that before the time in which the carts would be delivered, or the collection would begin for the carts, we're going to reevaluate their neighborhood. Obviously, the way they're doing it now, they're comfortable with and they're used to doing, and that's fine. We had to do something similar when we rolled out the new changes to Middletown. There are certain areas that we understand are way too tight, or they don't have adequate place to put a cart of any size. So I understand that. We've agreed to work with the folks and to talk through what-
That's all good. I understand all that, but my biggest problem is the lack of communication. Like, you keep saying you did this with the township. You sent an email on the 16th at 3:00 in the afternoon, telling them that you're going to be mailing this out tomorrow, with no chance on a holiday weekend to be prepared for that, to get it onto our website or anywhere else.
Well, the current, when we originally started, again, the special announcement letter, which was directly related to-
I'm not talking about this special announcement. That came after the one telling me my change of trash came-
Yes, those did go out close together. And again, we did have trouble confirming the address list, and that, we could have tried to do that sooner, but that was not available. So now that we have the add-
Then why send it out before? You're putting the cart in front of the worst, is what you're doing.
I understand.
You've got a lot of excuses, is what you have.
I understand. We're doing, this is not being pushed on the township, this is a safety measure.
It absolutely didn't push on the township. Can we vote on it right now?
Is it a voteable item?
What?
Is it a voteable item?
You tell me, no.
As far as I understand-
So you're focusing on the township?
As far as I know, as I understand, the service that we provide to the township at no charge is part of our-
There's no charge. There's no monetary change. You didn't say there's no charge.
The interest, the collections that we are providing is part of our host benefit. We're happy to do that. But when we have issues with employees being injured, and they're having trouble with either workers' comp, or they're getting injured because there's, you know, syringes, there's other things that are in trash bags that are possibly have to collect.
Come on now, this has been, people have been collecting trash for hundreds of years.
Correct. And was it there a better way?
Like I said, you've got a lot of excuses. The biggest issue you have right now is the lack of communication. Like, if you want this to work smoothly, you can't jam it down our throats.
Understood. We are not attempting to. The website has been updated today. The township engineer that you hired, Carol Engineering, we worked with her lately-
I understand we, that, it got updated today, but you could have given us a chance to update it beforehand.
If we had had all the accurate information, we would have gotten it to you beforehand. I apologize for that difference.
You don't even respond to emails. Rose couldn't even get a response to an email for four days.
To who?
I don't know. I'll send you the list if you want.
I would appreciate that.
Hold on, I'll show you right now.
I did reach out to Rose last week, but I know she was away. I reached out to her today, and I understand she's on vacation, or she's out, I guess, until Wednesday. So there are some loose ends. For instance, we would like to ask her to post the Frequently Asked Questions list on there, so that other residents would have a chance to see it, and they'd be able to ask other questions that, you know, we haven't already addressed or took, you know, a close look at.
The list of names, Benjamin Bolden, Christopher Broman, Brian Lucena, Donald Mack, Bobby Jones, they were all on the email that nobody responded to.
Okay, if you would resend that, I'm sure you will get a response.
I'm not rescinding anything. You guys just need to polish your act up and give us a chance and work with us. We understand that there's nothing that's going to stop this from happening. We understand that. But this whole thing with changing the date was the biggest problem so far. This is step one, and you guys have this such a mess, it really doesn't make anybody comfortable for the rest of this rollout.
And we took a look at that, and there was one discussion that we had early on, is do we change the day and issue the carts at the exact same time? And internally, we determined that was probably too much change at one shot. So we decided to do a slower rollout, do the day change, and then we're waiting two months, between April and the end of June, until the carts go into use.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the fact that the trash pickup dates changed. That's probably a bigger deal to people that have no idea that their trash date changed than the cart rollout is. Like, we could have advertised this better. We could have put in the, on Levittown Now that it was happening this week, and probably more people would have gotten the word out. We could have put it on social media and everything else, but we couldn't.
We did advertise in Levittown Now all of last week. It was in their email newsletter, along with their social media. We had ads posted-
What social media? Not our social media. It just started this week.
Okay. But we posted through Levittown Now also, in their social media channels. They use the information we provided to them. I understand that we could have rolled this out a little differently, and I apologize for the short notice on the postcards. Once it goes to the printer, and it was sent first-class mail, which is unusual for postcards, to try and get them to everybody as quickly as possible, knowing that there are sometimes delays with the post office itself. It is not the post office's problem. I understand that. So we would like to invite anyone who is having an issue with their day or doesn't understand their day change, or maybe somehow was not informed by postcorps or hasn't been able to contact customer service and get their day that they've been assigned. I do have the list of resident addresses, and I do have all the days of service. So if there's someone here in the audience tonight that would like to double-check their address, I'd be more than happy to stay through, like, the end of public comment, or shortly thereafter, out in the lobby, and I can help them figure out what day they're supposed to be picked up, if there's confusion.
Is there anyone who signed this list that has questions or comments regarding the Waste Management stuff that we're talking about right now? Shall I assume that everybody that's, or, go ahead. Do you want to start? You get to call up to the mic, and just state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gawne. I live on Liberty Drive. And in regards to things that have been said, it's a little bit more, it's some comment, a little bit question, is that still okay to go forward?
What?
It's regard, is it still okay to go forward at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. It is about, strictly about the Waste Management. I'm hearing you say things such as safer, more efficient for the community. I'm hoping that you're looking at that for Liberty Drive. It's been brought to you from the board about the lack of communication. I'd also like to go forward about the lack of thoughtfulness. You've known that Falls Township Incorporated, or that Liberty Drive, and all of Oxford Crossing is a part of Falls Township, and why it took until tonight for anyone to bring that to Waste Management's attention. I'm very confused about. I have no trust in Waste Management's statement tonight that you guys are going to look into it, because as a community, we hear from our counterparts who live in Middletown Township and Bristol Township, and how surveys have gone out. People have responded to those, and you guys go forward and make your own plans. So that is a big concern of mine. We are a community that is very widespread in ages. So seeing the sizes of the trash cans, that is a huge concern, knowing that we have elderly, that even if it is a flat plain, to try and have that pulled across grass, it is not a development that has a sidewalk to pull it across. There's not a driveway. Again, why this is coming on April 28th, I believe it is?
Today.
Yes. Why we're talking about it today, and why Waste Management, again, we've always been a part of Falls Township, why this wasn't already a part of the plan, that is a big concern of mine. Thinking about safety, we have trash that is brought into many areas. So when I think about if there is a fire situation, how's a fire truck going to safely pull up if there are potentially 14 trash cans lined up in an area? I thought about that very much the last three days as I am going for my daily walks. We have, for the same thing with kids that are playing in within our area. And you said that people from Waste Management have driven through, so as you are dodging potential trash cans, I hope you're also then thinking about the kids that you're dodging, because you're going back to, you're trying to create a safer and more efficient area for the community. This does not apply when you're thinking about our area. So I'm concerned about our elderly, I'm concerned about our youth, I'm concerned about your timetable, and I'm concerned that no one thought about us as a part of Falls Township. And I've yet to see that you have done any of this within a timetable where you're planning to just drop off trash cans where we normally drop off our trash. I'm not sure if you know where 41 even drops off their trash, because I would love to see a map where you think I drop off my trash.
Where do you currently put your trash, ma'am?
Not to be sarcastic, but you're Waste Management, and you're planning to drop off my trash cans? So I'd like to have you tell me on the map where you're planning to drop off my trash cans.
I don't, you have to cut it short. There's a five-minute limit per person, but you're pretty much wrapping it up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir, go ahead. I want to cross your name off the list, right, miss? Okay.
Yeah, I'll be very brief and to the point.
And your name, sir?
My last, I'm going to tell you. My last name is Doran, D-O-R-A-N. First name Bernard, B-E-R-N-A-R-D. I'm an original owner on Ivanhoe Court since April of 89. To me, this is a dead issue in Oxford Crossing. There are four, there are 200 houses in a very small area, 200. You guys are going to drop off 400 of these things in our small neighborhood, 400 of them. Most of the people don't even know they're coming. Know where to put them. I have no, no, that's number one. Number two, I have nowhere to put them. Maybe on my front lawn, I guess, I don't know. Association's not going to like that. I mean, you might as well drop me off a huge metal dumpster. I have nowhere. It's a black and white A&amp;B thing. Just ain't going to work for me. 400. And what she was saying about the small children, children are everywhere. Now we're going to add 400 large containers. I mean, I got nothing else to say. To me, it's ridiculous. Sorry. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir? It's all right. You gotta come up to the mic, though. You have to come up to the microphone. It's all right. Just state your name and where you live, please.
I just found out this morning. My name is Charles C. Benkert, B-E-N-K-E-R-T. I live at 264 Liberty Drive. Been there 18 years. I did not find out about this. My neighbor came in front of my house today to tell me that the garbage wasn't going to get picked up. I've got no emails, no notification, nothing. In the 18 years I've been at Oxford Crossings, I've enjoyed it. We have a good board of trustees. But in the two interactions I've had with Waste Management, it's been deplorable. I put out a recycling can, as always, about a year ago. Fortunately, I have video around my house. There's reasons for that. But I have it. And I saw the Waste Management man take my perfectly good recycling can and throw it in the trash, in the truck. So I called up Waste Management. I was never talked to so rudely in my life. I'm a gentleman. I do not, I am never rude to anyone, even if they are rude to me. I spent many years in the service of this country, and I have learned that you get much more with a little honey than you do with vinegar.
Yep, you get further with sugar than you do salt.
Sir?
You get farther with sugar than you do salt. I agree.
And that's the way to behave. But Waste Management, I am 100% disabled veteran. I have five holes in me. I can't even tell you what I did. But it wasn't pleasant. The thing is, I put my trash out. In the back of my house, it goes down in a hill. So I use plastic bags. I don't have much trash. I'm one person. I put out garbage maybe once a week, every 10 days, something like that. But for me, I have a lift that gets me off my stairs to bed. I don't have one for the basement, so I never go down there. But my son comes over, changes filters and things like that. Good man. But I cannot see the advantage to this. We already have a garbage can. It does the exact same thing. All it is, is a container. It holds garbage. Half the people in the complex don't use it. They put a plastic bag out front, which is what I've developed. I do that. I can't go back into the back. I can't get down the steps. I can't go up and down the hill. For me, it would be an imposition, and it would be a hardship. It doesn't sound like much, but if I'm up for more than 45 minutes, my back goes into, it's horrible. That's why I'm homebound. I'm certified homebound by the VA. This change would change all that. I can't do- I can't do it. I don't know how it'll get done. Thank you.
You got it. I will say, before we keep going, you know, my experience... I've lived in Falls Township probably 24 or 5 years now. I've never had a really bad experience with Waste Management. They've always picked up my trash, other than when they missed a day, but they've always... You know, they come a day or two later. But I've never had a... I mean, you know, this isn't an us versus them situation. I know a lot of people aren't happy about the change. You know, and I know especially... And I, like I said, I lived at 245 Liberty Drive, so I don't... I know it's going to be really hard for people like you to get trash out, which it doesn't make sense. I know there's a lot of people in Falls Township that look forward to this. They like the idea of the new trash cans. And Mr. Jones said they have big ones, they have smaller ones. But, you know, I didn't want this to turn into an us versus them thing. Like, my experience with Waste has always been decent. You know, they've always picked up my trash. No matter what I put out on the bulk day, it's always disappeared. This just, in my opinion, could have been handled a lot better. Hopefully, the part, the transition to the new cans, we can all get on board and fix this. It was the initial... This... Did they change your date today? They changed it to tomorrow? Yeah. So that's the initial thing. This has been the hardest part for a lot of people, is not realizing it. So I don't want this to, you know... I know you guys are really upset and I agree that it doesn't make a lot of sense and how are you going to drag these things through your house to get them out front, from out back? But somebody else had their hand up? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
My name's Charles Vetter. I live at 392 Ivanhoe Court in Oxford Crossing. I just don't see how this is feasible in just the size of these bins alone. We don't really have streets there. We have parking lots. That's all they are. Curb-wise, these need to be put out on the curb, next to the curb. They can't be in the parking areas where the cars are backing out. So if you... If these cans are two feet across and you need a little bit of space between them... Did anybody go around and measure the... Our curb? Yeah, there's no place to put them. Zero. Not... Excuse me?
Now, we're talking about... Call for a solution.
Oh, okay.
And you're also part of the same...
Yeah.
Okay. So no, we appreciate the input because there are areas that it's just really not going to work the way in which it could on other areas. We understand that. So the fact that you're bringing all these issues up to us is perfect because that way then we can set a time or have a group of you maybe represent the folks from Hunter Crossing where we can... I'm sorry. Oxford. Thank you. To determine what the best method is going to be. With regard to those who may be disabled or have issues with mobility, we do have smaller carts than what we have outside. But also... But wait, we also do door service. And if someone cannot manage, as the gentleman was saying, he has difficulty and I understand that, he would not have to use a cart. We would make other options available to him to continue to put his waste out the way he currently does. We have no desire to make this an inconvenience for the residents.
So then what are you suggesting?
What I'm saying is if carts do not work physically...
Which they won't.
Which they won't. We will take a look at that. If you want to put together a handful of folks that would represent, we'd be able to meet with them and help with that or we can have a meeting for that.
Why do we need people to represent? Why?
Well, you're all welcome to come to a discussion.
Why isn't there a solution like right now, knowing what you... What we've just told you?
Would that affect every single person?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not familiar. I apologize. I personally am not familiar. I know the other gentlemen are.
Fourteen houses, so we're all...
Right. Exactly.
There's eight in a group, in a cluster.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
It's just not going to work there.
Okay.
And as everybody gets older and older, it's really not going to work.
Okay.
Just because Hollybrook is 1700 from township.
I'm sorry? Correct.
Excuse me. When you're...
I'll continue to service you as your servant.
Excuse me. When you're talking from your seats, it can't get picked up by the microphone. And people who are at home watching and may be interested in what you're saying, they're not really hearing anything. So I understand that there's a little bit of a dialogue going on here and that's very good. But when you're talking from your seats, nobody's hearing you. They're just... It just gets blank. So if you could all wait to ask your questions when you're able to come to the podium, it would be helpful. Thank you.
So then all I'm trying to say is that if she's saying that we do not have to, you know, abide by this new setup, why can't things just stay the way they are?
And that's what we talked about out front and what Patty means by... She wants to make sure every 200 residents are her and we resolve all of their issues. Now, there are sections that we don't just do this in Falls Township. We do this in Bristol and we do it in Middletown. And there are sections that we don't have access for our ASL, our brand-new one-man trucks. And we continue to do with the conventional rear-load service what you are used to. And we will most likely do that in Oxford Crossing. There's nothing that Waste Management can't resolve through Waste. We do this every day. We listen to customers every day. And we do our best to try and resolve all the issues to everybody's satisfaction. Now, I know Oxford Crossing. I live in Levittown. I've been in the area my entire life. I know that we can service it and figure this out. We are by no means going to be the enemy in this. We will help you resolve this so everybody is happy, you know?
Nobody's saying you're the enemy.
Well, I'm not...
I've always been very happy with...
And that's what our goal is. We want everyone to continue to be happy with what your services are. We are not here to cause drama in your life or to cause dissatisfaction or create a bad image.
It is. Little drama.
I know. I can feel it. But we will work with everybody. There's still two months till we go live with this and we will figure this out. All right? I guarantee you.
Thank you.
So if it... It could stay the way it is.
Right.
A two-man truck or whatever.
We will figure it out.
We will take a look at it.
You're saying you're figuring it out, but let's just say...
Well, we're going to go through the entire area and verify everything. Most likely, everything you're saying is 100% true, but we still have to look at it. We're not going to just make quick decisions.
I thought you were already out there.
We are out there. We're out there.
I thought you already came out and looked at the development.
Well, I...
You said that, didn't you?
Yeah.
You said it.
Yeah, we've done the drive-throughs, but like what Patty's talking about, we'd like to meet with...
Bobby, you've got to use the mic, please.
We'd like to meet with a group of the residents, maybe a couple. Show us.
This is us. We're here.
All right. We've got to get back on track.
At your property. So you can show us the hill. Yeah, no place for storage. Everything you're telling us, we want to go see. That's all. That's all we're asking for.
It's kind of self-explanatory.
Yeah, it is kind of self-explanatory.
All right.
I got you.
Anything else, sir? Do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Is there anybody else that wants to comment on the trash? Yes, sir. You can state your name.
Hello, my name is Bharat Ghil. His first name is B-H-A-R-A-T.
Okay.
Last name is Ghil, G-H-I-L. I live at 227 Liberty Drive. And my biggest concern is safety.
Yeah.
So we are... I'm right in the... Next to the corner house. And we have a very steep hill. Literally like it's a... I slipped actually twice just looking like going down the hill. And especially during the rainy season or even like the snow, the kids actually come and sled on it. That's how steep that area is. So it's a very hazardous situation. So if, God forbid, somebody falls or gets injured or somebody has, you know, something happens, who is going to be responsible? Either the township, the association, or the Waste Management. Because the biggest concern, as the other folks has mentioned, there are so many, you know, old people are there and then the kids have moved out. So there is... The help which was there is no longer there, especially even in my situation, you know? So my kids are gone and so I have to actually... I'm 63 and a half. And I have to actually drag that from that hill. And if I fall, and especially as it's during the, you know, the rainy season and the snow, there is absolutely no way I can go down on that hill. So that's my biggest concern and hope, you know, fully the... And other... The gentleman mentioned about this one. According to this, the flyer which I just got, it says that each and every container has to be three feet, no less than three feet apart between each other and the obstacle. So that means we have only like six feet or eight feet. So at any given point where that point is, it's only two containers. How are we going to fit all those five, six, you know, residents out there? So there is... Has to be redesigned. The lady said about this, you know, the fire truck, that's the biggest hazards. Our kids are playing outside and all that. So I hope, you know, the township and the Waste Management will consider that and, you know, hopefully keep us the way we have that system right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that speak about trash? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Russell Smith. I live at 229 Liberty Drive and I'm also the president of Oxford Crossing's Homeowner Association. I first want to thank the board for allowing us to come and speak and for Waste Management for hearing our concerns. Again, I will say Patty, definitely use my name and I'll give you my contact information.
Yes.
You know, have someone to contact and I can help coordinate with others in the community that would like to participate. The one concern which I haven't heard addressed or brought forward is when we go to contact Waste Management. So if we have missed service or I know in some cases, because we get the service through the township, every time I've called, I get asked for an account number. If I cannot provide an account number, nobody will talk to me. That needs to be addressed. We need to have a way that when we have a concern or, for example, I know, I think it was like three weeks ago, they did not come and pick up trash and didn't come until the next day. And we wanted to call in and, you know, call in, you don't have an account number, I can't help you.
I will say, and that's a very good point. And we have had that issue for many years. The township was picked up by route, by street. And those individual properties, you did not have a separate account number. Your account number was basically a service account for Falls Township. That has changed.
Okay.
That has changed with regard to your account number. If you call customer service, they now have all the individual addresses in the system.
Okay.
So you can literally go online also to WM.com if this is what you prefer to do. Not everybody does. And you can go in there and you can schedule a bulk or you can issue a missed pickup for your address.
Okay.
That information, and that's relatively new on a full township-wide service. People in other communities who are one-on-one contracts with us, where we're picking them up, but maybe not their neighbor, they have their own account number. It's different with when we do municipal contracts. That has changed, though, in our system, especially for the residents of Falls Township.
Okay. Because that was one of our concerns.
Absolutely. It's confusing. Yeah. So that's all changed. If you call into the 800 number and you get customer service, they will ask you your address and that will be in the system. So if you got a flyer, I know you're in the system if you got one of the flyers at your home. So... And I appreciate you introducing yourself. Yes, let's talk. Let's get a group together or find out the best way to move forward. It may be to stay the same, but whatever that decision is, every single resident in Oxford Crossing will get confirmation of that directly from Waste Management.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to the board.
You got it. So that goes for everybody in the township? They can just use their address now when they call and we don't need any account number anymore?
Correct. So basically, if he were to call in and...
Right, I'm familiar with it. We had the account number.
Okay. Yeah, well, you don't need the account number. You just basically need to give the address.
Okay.
And that individual address is in their system. And they will also know what day of the week you get collected because we did not upload those changes until the changes were complete and the residents were notified. That's actually in the system now too for customer service to give you additional information on that as well.
On your website?
On the website or by calling the 800 number.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I answer anything else for you?
Anybody else to speak about trash? Brian? Do you have anything, Brian? Galway?
No, it's a lot to take in.
Yeah, I know. There's a couple more hands I saw.
Agreed. Communications, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Shout-out from Metzger, Falls Township resident. I'm on Hood Boulevard, across from the... One of the high schools. And there are a lot of times where they miss our trash. So I'm glad they fixed the account number issue. But for those of us that haven't gotten any documentation, haven't heard a thing and literally Falls Township has been our only communication to give us the heads-up on this over the last month. I think we heard about it last month and this month. If we don't get documentation from you, are we staying the same? Are we not staying the same?
You can go to our website and there's an interactive map and you can look at your address and it'll show you what your trash pickup day is. And that was updated just today.
Okay.
That's always been that way, but it wasn't updated until today.
Okay.
So it'll show you the new... If there is a new trash pickup day, it would show it today.
Okay. So it's not going to change after this, though? We're anticipating that that's the most updated and we're good?
Correct.
It's correct. Everybody who receives communication, their addresses and the change, their new dates of collection is in the interactive map that the website has available on the website.
And that's on Falls Township?
Or you make contact Waste Management at our 800 number. And you'll get customer service, give them your address, and they'll also be able to give you the same information. Now, you said you did not receive any information. Let's check your address outside the meeting. We'll check your address and I'll see what you are listed as. So you're not in a planned development as a single home within the township?
We're on a main street. I mean, so you have 300 houses that surround Pensbury High.
Mm-hmm.
I guarantee you can't miss us, even though Waste Management does.
And we know sometimes, you know, that those mailings do not get where they belong. But let me take a look at your address if you don't mind. Would you meet with me afterwards? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else here to, go ahead.
I'm Karen Tanner. I'm also in Oxford Crossing. I would like to know why the dates of the trash had to be changed.
The reason we changed the dates of the trash is because originally when it was being hand-serviced, the township was out of balance. So over time, there was more people trying to, we were trying to collect more people on one set of dates versus the other set. And when we have folks that are out on vacation, it's hard to balance our workforce to get everybody collected on their current days. And along with that, when you're using an automated service...
Which we're not going to be.
Which you're not going to be, but that's okay. But when you're using it township-wide, it changes the way in which you're collecting and so it rebalanced the township in that now there are certain sections that work better on a certain day and other sections...
For you, not for us, obviously.
I kind of like the change. I mean, I didn't like the Monday pickup because after a long holiday weekend, I was stuck with a bunch of trash.
You'll still get twice a week service.
But what happens now, our trash and recyclable and bulk are all now on Fridays. What happens when nobody picks it up on Friday? We have to look at it all weekend?
We try to follow up on any complaint within 24 hours. So next day...
Unless we complain, it's going to sit there.
Well, a lot of our service issues have been related to staffing typically on Mondays. So Monday recovery...
Do you get a call out on Fridays?
I mean, we have far more call outs on Mondays, but to put it in comparison, we were running 10 more routes on a Monday than we were on Wednesday, which we had none.
The recycle day had to go to Friday instead of go on Tuesday?
To keep them even across the week. Yeah. I mean, that's something I think if you really wanted to know the intricacies of it, we could go over, but it just was to keep it even across the week to have four trash routes on a Monday, two recycle routes, four days a week. Yeah.
So whatever's convenient for Waste Management.
I hadn't considered the Friday thing, but anyone else to speak about trash? Yes, sir. Real quick. You already spoke once.
Again, last name is Doran Diori and I'm on Ivanhoe Court. 200 houses compact together, 400 of these tubs with nowhere to put them for most people.
All right.
Doran.
All right, thank you, everyone.
I got a question.
Palmer has a question.
Couple residents asked, when the cans are distributed, if they want two rubbish cans, how do they get two? Because you're saying they're just going to drive up and down the street, put one at each house. They want two and that number might get higher than the 400.
The size of the containers that are generally throughout will be the 96 gallon. Those are the ones that are outside and there's also 65, I'm sorry, 64 gallon containers. There is a slight difference. Basically, the smaller one holds two-thirds of the larger one. 96 gallon containers are generally used in townships where they have once a week pickup and then, but you guys are still getting picked up twice a week. If someone needs another container, again, even before we start servicing them, call the 800 number, give them your address, and then if you require two carts versus one, they will be delivered directly to the property or to your home. There is no additional cost for that.
Second question. They're automated with the arm that picks it up? And when the trash can gets damaged, slammed on the ground, how do they get replacements if it's...
Again, you would call the 800 number.
And it's free to charge?
The township itself is not responsible for replacing those carts. We are.
The homeowner don't have to replace it for fear or anything? Okay.
No, sir.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
And somebody did ask a question that you guys will haul away their old trash cans, right?
Only if we're asked to and it's marked appropriately. Obviously, we don't want to grab somebody's trash can that they want to use for something else, maybe their yard waste or something else during leaf collection.
All right. Thank you.
Also, if you require a smaller can, you would like a smaller one because you have mobility issues. Again, a call to the 800 number lets us keep track. And that way, even from the get-go, if we know early enough, we can deliver the smaller one at the very beginning. If not, we can always switch those out to provide a container that's more suitable for someone's, you know, again, who has mobility issues.
Real fast, because this is, you guys have already spoke once.
She said that they would replace them if they got damaged. That's what they were supposed to do with the recycle bins that we have now. And their guys...
You get them here.
Excuse me?
You get them from the township building.
For free?
I don't know, are they free?
No. No, they're 30 some dollars, $36. Right. Now, these guys broke mine twice and they will not replace it. And, you know, I had a repair, I wasn't going to go buy another one. So that story could change.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take it...
You don't think so?
Real quick, sir.
So if your guys break it and we call up one day, maybe three years from now, that we're not going to have these anyway. I'm just saying.
Engage in a dialogue, please use the microphone.
All right.
Thank you.
I've listened carefully. Her answer to mobility problem is a smaller can. I have a 12-foot distance in height between the front of my yard and the back. It's a hill. I can't get up it.
Understood.
Period. I have enough hard time sitting here, 45 minutes to an hour. I can't use what they have. Thank you.
Your point is well taken. My comment about a smaller can is meant for all residents. We obviously are going to take a very close look at Oxford Crossing and decide what's in the best interests of everyone to service you. Like you said, you cannot use a wheeled cart to take your trash down. And if, even if everyone, even if everyone else around you used a trash can, but you could not, we would still accommodate your, we would accommodate you even if you were the only one in the community that could not use a container.
I can't.
Okay, well work that out.
I literally can't get to the back and get to the front.
Understood.
Literally.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you to everyone, including Waste Management. We appreciate you coming out. We're going to take a quick recess and come back at 8 o'clock. It's now 7, what, 53? 51?
With or to meet with the Bucks County Housing Group. No deliberations occurred and no votes took place.
All right, that takes us to item two, public comment. I'm going to skip that because we had enough public comment. So item three, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Ian McAnlis.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ian McAnlis. I live on Rice Drive. Next to me is Todd Vreeland. I'm assistant chief at Levittown Feralist Rescue Squad and just wanted to give the supervisors just a quick overview of the kind of things that we had in Falls Township over the last year. So starting at the beginning of quarter two for 2024 and ending at the end of first quarter of this year, we responded to 6,311 total calls in our response area. And out of those, 3802 were in Falls Township, which comes out to an 87% response rate from us, about 3325 calls. And that was just in our area in Falls Township. Of those dispatches that we had, the top three, respiratory distress, emergency transports and patient assists. And from those dispatches, the most outcome of those transports were just emergency transports, people needing to go into the hospital, people with respiratory distress and assisting those people who had fallen off the floor. Those people who requested to go to the hospital, we took them to the hospital. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll be, I've actually, I've resigned from Levittown. I have some health issues, so I stepped back and Ian's going to be taking my spot. That's why I'm not in my normal uniform. So Ian will be taking over. So if you have any questions, you can follow, you'll be able to follow up with him.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That takes us to, let's see, this one spoke, Tony Batiste.
Good evening. I have a question and that is, do we have township auditors?
Yeah.
Okay. And how much do they make?
I don't think they get paid anything. You mean the elected auditor? They don't get paid.
Okay, and who does...
We hire a firm, right? Mr. Clark?
Township auditors are elected, but then the firm hires, excuse me, the township hires a firm to conduct the audit.
So what is the point of having auditors?
I don't know.
They need to certify what the appointed auditors do.
Yeah, they don't actually do the auditing.
Okay. Makes no sense. One other question, and that is on all these consideration of approval for change orders. Have these changes already occurred?
I don't know.
No, they have not.
Okay. And are we going to know what they are about when we get to each one so we know...
Yeah, we take comment on each change order, each item as we get to it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Jennifer Metzger?
Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township. I'll be quick because you let me ask before. Erin, our heart goes out to her. She's a powerful figure. We appreciate, you know, everything that she does. Her reach extends to the school board and to all of our elections and everything. That brings me to asking everybody to vote, please remember to get out in May. It's a big deal. I know that it's an off year and we don't think we have to, but it's a big deal. If you like what we're talking about, come out and vote. If you don't like what we're talking about, please come out and vote. I also wanted to say, I personally thank you for standing up for us as a community. Yes. We really appreciate it. We know that it's not always easy to question, especially when it's one of our vendors. With Paula Page, she's running for township auditor. So I know, you know, there are a lot of people running. I do have a question about Lawson though. I think he's running for township supervisor. He was one of the people that were fired in October for issues against the township. So we're trying to figure out why he's still driving a Falls Township truck. So we do have a question there.
He's not driving a Falls Township truck. Absolutely not.
Okay. He had a plate on his truck less than a week ago. So my only question is, in, you know, something...
Oh, he works for the Lower Bucks Municipal Authority now. Maybe he's driving their truck?
I have no idea. All I'm asking is, is when we have somebody who resigns or is fired or pushed off, how do we know when they're hired back or when they're part of one of our local governments like that? Like how would we find out that they're actually hired back or trusted in the township again?
Well, he hasn't been hired back by the township.
No, but by our lower Bucks Municipal Authority, you said?
Which is completely separate from us. Has nothing to do with us.
But you thought there was lower bucks then?
I believe so.
Okay. So we'll look at that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Watermelon Man?
Most of your staff is not here, so I'm not going to say a whole lot. A lot of you should know that I'm involved with the 50-foot wall that's going to face my house on Hood Boulevard. It pisses me off to no extent. And as a result, I've been going to the Pensbury School Board meetings and I find out that Boys, Rachel Boys is on the environmental board. I find out that Aaron Mackey is on a zoning board. Aaron Mackey is married to Steer on the Pensbury School Board. So I don't know if there's collusion. I don't know. It's probably not illegal because I know Mr. Clark knows me because I was suing the Pensbury School in 2009 when he was the solicitor there. Now I'm having problems with Erin Aronson. She sent a police officer to my house.
Who is this?
You're involved because they're trying to weaponize, not you, the township. She's trying to weaponize the police department.
Who are we talking about?
Pensbury School Board.
Oh.
Pensbury School Board sent the township police to my house. He told me I was accused of assault. It's a total lie. It's another believe all women. And I'm not going to go into it. I'm sure Mr. Clark is very familiar with township bull crap that goes on. I'm just involved in it now. And I have to commend Officer 109 for coming over and having a discussion of imagery and errors because that's what's going on. Deception. Captain, great job for your officer. I really appreciate it. I was not put in handcuffs because of this. My father-in-law thought he was meals on wheels. So he didn't pull his gun or anything like that, really happy.
It's a good thing.
Oh, I'm not a George Floyd. I don't talk like him, I don't look like him, but thank God that we have good officers in Falls Township. So we did discuss the fact that he did have some background and training and understanding where I was coming from about the 50-foot wall going in my front yard for Pensbury New High School to keep everybody in like an institution. That's what they're doing. They don't want me talking. So I don't want no crosses burned on my yard because they may be doxing me because of this or swatting me. And we all know what that all is because they use the police department and the friends within the township. We all know how everybody crosses the lines. But God bless America and I don't want anybody coming over to my house. I live right across the street from that broken school sign and they're financially going broke. You need to look at the deficit of Pensbury High School because you're all involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the names on the list. Is there anyone else for public comment? That takes us to item number three, Burns &amp; Burns LLC, conditional use hearing, 100 Central Avenue. This is pretty cut and dry as well.
Good evening, Frank Dillon on behalf of the applicant.
We'll need a motion to open the public hearing and then I think Ms. Gallagher will take it from there.
Make a motion to open the public hearing. Seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Good evening, Frank Dillon on behalf of the applicant.
Hold on, Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Dillon, if I may?
Pardon me?
If I may? Thank you, Mr. Dent. We're here this evening regarding a conditional use application related to property at 100 Central Avenue. Tax map parcel is 13-005-097. The property is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zoning District. The applicant this evening is Burns &amp; Burns LLC, which seeks relief pursuant to section 20923D2 of the Falls Township zoning code. For approval to use the site for vehicle services, including mechanical, cleaning and painting operations. The parcel was formally used as an automotive body shop and no improvements are proposed. Mr. Dillon, that'll turn that over to you.
I have Mr. Burns here. We can have him sworn in.
Paul Clifford Burns?
Mr. Dillon, other than the property notice this evening, do you have any exhibits or just...
Yes, we submitted just the affidavit of service.
Great. So we'll mark the affidavit of service as applicant's exhibit one. We'll mark a copy of the advertisement for this evening's hearing as the township's exhibit one. A copy of the proof of posting of the property this evening will be township exhibit two and a copy of the application will be township exhibit three.
So we basically have an existing building which was previously used for a body shop and mechanical repair. Mr. Burns is going to use it as part of his organization to recondition vehicles that he uses in his shop and it's for repairs and things of that nature. There's no change in the building, normal working hours. If you have questions for Mr. Burns, he's here to answer them.
I'm correct that this isn't going to be open to the public, it's just going to be for your personal vehicles?
Correct, just internal.
Yeah. And this is a body shop that's gonna be used as a body shop. It's pretty cut and dry. Any questions, Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Is there any public comment needed? No hands. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. That was easy.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Item number four, TJJ Properties LLC. Oh, we gotta close the hearing now?
I think you just did.
The hearing was closed with the vote.
I apologize. Mr. Palmer's hungry over here. I can hear him belly grumbling, so I'm trying to get through this. Item number four is TJJ Properties LLC, waiver of land development, ninety-two forty, Old Tyburn Road, Marsville, tax map parcel thirteen oh four seven oh one four.
Okay, I'm Dave Wallace Savage, engineer for the applicant. The owners are present. It's TJJ Properties at the address you mentioned, nine two four zero Old Tyburn Road. We submitted an application for waiver of land development. We got conditional recommended approval from the planning commission in January, and also received a recommendation from the Bucks County Planning Commission for approval as well. We are here tonight to request final approval of the waiver of land development from the Board of Supervisors.
All right, any questions or comments from professionals?
Mr. Jones?
No comments. Mr. Chairman, it's a straightforward project.
Straightforward. Mr. Clark?
It's very straightforward. No comments.
Any board comment needed, Mr. Palmer? Mr. Galloway?
None. No comments.
Is there any public comment needed? All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five fourteen. Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number five, approval for Trenton Road and Olds Boulevard Traffic Signal Improvement Project bid. This is the one that came in way over what we budgeted. Is that correct? Almost double. I'm gonna make a motion to reject this bid. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Dent, you should've asked for public comment.
Is there any public comment needed on that one? I'm sorry. I apologize. There was.
Sorry, just a second. What is it that we're spending money there for, if it's too much money?
We rejected the bid. It was supposed to be for a traffic light improvement, but-
To replace it?
Uh, I think it was just, is it actually replace it?
Operating.
Operating.
Upgrade.
Upgrading.
Thank you for deciding against it.
But the price came in double what we had budgeted for.
Yeah, thanks for deciding against it. Just 'cause all the stuff, we don't need it. Like, of all things.
Oh, I figured you were being sarcastic.
No, no. I really appreciate it. Thank you for not wasting our money. We appreciate it. Seriously.
Where am I now? Item number six, consideration of approval for resolution for the right-of-way grant agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC, and authorizing the township manager to execute any and all legal required authorizations or documentations. Mr., somebody wanna tell me what this is?
Mr. Dent, I can handle that. This is a fairly standard requirement from Verizon in order to accept the grant funds, and this will enable Mr. Tequita to sign any necessary paperwork to accept the grant funding.
That's it?
That's it.
Any questions from board members?
No.
Any public comment on that? Go ahead.
Does this agreement come with any financial benefit for the township?
No.
It allows the township to receive grant funds from Verizon.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. It allows the township to receive grant funds from Verizon. The specifics of the actual grant, I would defer to Mr. Tequita, though.
Okay, only because it seems like whenever they put up new lines, they never take away the old ones. So instead of having four and five lines across your backyard, you have fifteen. So is there something in that agreement that you can have them take down old lines when they put new ones in?
No, this is only for the right-of-way.
Well, that's where they're putting the lines, across the right-of-ways.
The back of your, the back of your property would not be the right-of-way.
There's a right-of-way there for-
Yeah, that's where the lines run, the power lines.
The telephone lines, the power lines.
And Verizon is a public utility regulated by the Public Utility Commission. We don't have the authority to tell them what to do with those lines.
Okay.
And this is specific to the renovations of the new building? This is specifically for the township building. This is not related to any other property in the township.
Oh, okay. My apologies.
Can you ask, can you shut those doors, or ask them to keep it down out there? It's hard hearing up here, and that's a distraction. Item number seven, consideration of approval for proposal for grant consulting services for Millennium Strategies. Ms. Gallagher?
Uh, this is the grant writing company that the township has employed for the past several years, and I would defer to Mr. Tequita on the specifics, but I believe the township is quite happy with their services so far.
The board is being asked to consider granting the proposal for consulting services for Millennium Strategies. Over the course of their tenure with us, they have secured one point, almost one point four million dollars in grant funding for the township. Their current, under their current contract, they've received, they provided us two grants for two hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Renewal would be a flat retainer, seventeen hundred dollars per month, but not to exceed amount of twenty thousand, four hundred. They will bill hourly, a hundred and thirty dollars per hour for services rendered specifically, only when specifically requested by the township.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Palmer?
Uh, this works out pretty good. I know we use them many a times for some of our nonprofits. I think the library, we offer services to them.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry about that. A lot of our nonprofits, we extend this service to. I know the library, the fire department, Fallsington Firehouse got a hundred thousand. I have no problem with this. This is money well spent.
Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no questions.
Any public comment? No? Is there a motion?
Send them.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right.
Mr. Dent, we're having a little debate here. We were also distracted by Mr. Tequita going to shut the doors. We don't know if we voted on the Verizon agreement.
Yeah, we voted first, then we went back.
Okay, okay. Apologies.
Item, where are we at now? Item number nine?
Eight.
Oh, yeah. Consideration of approval for proposal from Design Blends for additional services due to extended construction for the municipal building renovation project. This is the architect, is that correct? Who's way, I guess he thinks he's gonna get more money, because he's, um, this job's way off schedule, is that correct?
Mr. Dent, we're gonna recommend that this matter be tabled this evening. Our office and the manager's office need to look into this a little bit more. We'd recommend you bring this back next month.
All right, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Item number nine, consideration of a change order request from Berry &amp; Homer Uplifting. What is this for?
Uh, this is James Gates, Grace Construction. This change order is to add uplighting that wasn't shown on the drawings for the monument sign for the new township building. The letters are not backlit. It's needed to shine light on the sign, so people know what the building is.
So how was this missed?
Well, the only thing that was shown in the drawings was a conduit out to the sign, no lighting, no circuit.
All right. Mr. Palmer?
Still, how was it missed?
I don't know the answer to that question. You'd have to ask the design team.
Architect?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, public comment?
So I don't have to give you shit, because I feel this every time, and we see this every time. This is unacceptable. There's no reason. But my question is, is if you're gonna go back to the drawing board and figure out the costs and all the things, can someone make sure that it's at least waterproof and all the stuff that it's supposed to be, please?
Yes. I am making sure that is all handled. That is part of my responsibilities as construction manager.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no questions, sir.
Is there a motion?
Send them.
Motion made and seconded. Can you pull the board, Mr. Tequita?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Consideration, item ten, consideration of four change orders from Sage Ronco.
Shall I go through those?
Yeah.
Okay. The first change order, so there was a gap in scope. There are two gate pedestals shown on the drawings for the access controls to the Sallyport. There were none drawn and none purchased for the entrance and exit to the police area in their section of the building.
That's all of it?
That's the first one.
Let's go through all of them.
Okay. The second one is keying coordination changes. When we sat down with the contractor to review all the locks and cores and keys for every door in the building, we, we being the township, the designers, and myself and my counterpart, looked at some doors that needed to be revisited as far as access control goes. We had to add some card readers and power and control for all that to make the, to make the doors work correctly, so the building functions as the township needs it. The third item, it's a, it's a minor field change. The mounting brackets for some of the cameras didn't work with the existing field conditions. And lastly, the township decided to add a camera in the atrium on the second floor to look into the community room, because that was a blind spot.
We can do all these at once, Mr. Clark?
You can, unless any of the board members would like them separated out.
All right. As crazy as all these change orders are, these here, you know, are kind of a standard thing. You get into a building, you know, they didn't put a lock to open that door, so it was like, oh, who missed that? Stuff like that. A camera had to be added, or a bracket that didn't work. These aren't as big as some of these have been. But what is the total here, Mr. Tequita?
I'll read each one, each change order out separately.
I can do that. So the, one is twenty-eight hundred dollars, total of five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one. One is a total of eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. One is four hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, and one is two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seven cents. Is there any public comment needed?
Mr. Dent, just a, the, the number for the first quote was five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to accept these change orders?
Send them.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Or can you pull the board, Mr. Tequita?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Uh, item eleven, a Sage Ronco name change. So this company just changed their name?
Yes, they were bought out by Ronco. It used to be Sage originally. They've changed their name since to Ronco, and had to go through the process of-
All right, and we have to do this? We have to vote on this?
Yes, because it's changing the party which the township is contracting with, so you need to acknowledge that.
Any public comment needed? Any board comment?
No comment.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Send them.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Number twelve, consideration of change order request from Rycon.
I'll go through the list.
Which document is this? That's this one?
Looks like it. Change order fifteen, top right corner.
Yeah.
First item is a credit. It was part of another change order that was, that went to one of the other primes. Rycon was backcharged for the work that they damaged. The second item is for, I'm just gonna run through these. If you have any questions, we can get into the details. Additional framing in the clear story section of the community room. We had to relocate a door, because it made sense to put it on the other side, to keep it out of the police space. We had to add a monumental stair footing. The footing, there was no footing shown for the stair, the main stair into the building, and that was put in after the stair was already set. There was a footing required for the brick on the exterior, because the design team did not take into account the three inches of insulation that's required now, as part of the energy code, so we had to extend the footing, which required piles. There was a section of ductwork in the fitness room that was not enclosed with a partition. It was shown exposed. The, this is the Rycon portion, carpentry portion, and doorframe hardware portion of the keying changes that came out of the keying meeting, to make sure that the building keying worked properly for the township. There were a couple of carpentry changes to finish ceilings, building box heads, how to frame a shade pocket, so that the shade, unfinished shade, wasn't exposed in the room, shown on the drawings. There were two sections of storefront that were not properly or correctly shown on the drawings that needed to be added. There were two rooms we needed to add ceilings into that weren't shown. The air compressor room in the DPW area did not fit the compressor that the township had, so the wall had to be moved. Existing condition on the west side of the building required an additional metal flashing to be added at the base of the building to keep water out. And last but not least, the camera extension for the construction cameras for the job.
All right. Any public comment on this one? Go ahead.
The footing for the stairs, and the footing or piles or whatever is needed for the extra insulation, isn't that, that something the architect should know?
Yes, you would think.
So why are we being penalized for it? I mean, I realize you have to put them in, but-
Yeah, the town's not being penalized was missed scope, so they didn't pay for it initially. So now they're, now it needs to be paid for. If it wasn't in the design documents, it wasn't part of the quote that the contractor gave for the work.
Okay, but who designed it? The architect?
Yes.
So the architect is putting in stairs and not putting in footers, putting in whatever the required insulation is, and apparently doesn't know what the rules are for the insulation now. So we're gonna be held responsible to go back and redo that, because it's gonna cost extra now to redo it, right?
Yes.
So who's paying for that?
The township.
And why isn't the architect being penalized?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't there something in the contract that says he's gotta be at least correct in his... Mr. Clark, is there something in the contract that requires him to be correct in his assessments of what the building needs?
Would you like me to answer this?
Yes.
Everything with the project is being reviewed.
Okay.
Okay, then I just wanna add, you know, right now, we're in a position where we're picking people based on bids, because we're supposed to go with the lowest bid. We're supposed to do all the right things by the township. You guys have been able to keep our taxes down. You've been amazing with managing it. You know, I do complain here and there, because some of our Jones Engineering, you know, bids are big, and we have a lot of things going on, and the same thing here. bids are big and we have a lot of things going on, and the same thing here. But at the end of the day, we do know what goes into a basic building, and these change orders have been things that are supposed to be written into the contracts. So we're trusting our lawyers to make sure at this point that we get this fixed. I mean, this is unacceptable. There is a point where there are expenses that these architects and these designers are gonna have to pick up at this point.
Yes, there is.
Honestly.
No, I agree with you. There's a lot of stuff on here, though, that is stuff that's had to be changed or relocated, stuff like that, that is unavoidable in a job like this.
It happens.
Especially when you're doing a renovation.
Absolutely, the $10,000 here and there that happens with this side or the other, it makes sense. But seriously, this is starting to get crazy. We're adding extra walls, which makes us have to add extra electric, which has to, you know, have additional change orders for additional movements. This is craziness. This is basic stuff, just for the structure of the building.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, all seconded. Mr. Tequita, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to number, is this a change order here?
For QPI, yes.
Okay, total of this change order is $13,728.
And this includes relating to Rycon's change order for moving the door, the electric, the switch, a couple outlets had to move. There, the back flow preventer actually requires an outlet that wasn't shown in the drawings. That was a home run back to the main panel through finished walls. There was a miss with the louvers, the mechanical louvers require motorized dampers. There was no circuiting or detailing or notice of any kind on the electrical drawings that they needed to be wired. That was detailed on RFI, and that's that cost. And then the last item was for a change to light fixtures, respect to be heavy-duty security light fixtures that required all the ceiling and framing in the ceiling in an area that wasn't a security ceiling, so, you know, it was a design miss. The cheapest option to move forward was to buy standard fixtures and not tear the ceiling apart, so that's the route we went.
And this is a $13,000 change order. Any more questions or the same thing? Any board member questions, Mr. Galloway?
No.
No?
No.
If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Tequita, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Sir.
Item 14, consideration of approval for the public works contract. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Dents. What you have in front of you this evening is the tentative agreement with the Public Works Union. It's IOUE Local 542. We have worked with the union representatives over the course of the last several months to come up with an agreement, and what you have in front of you has been approved by the union, and we are in the process of finalizing the full agreement. But this will allow staff to implement some of the basic changes right away.
All right, any public comment needed on this, public works contract? Any board comment needed, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none? Consideration, item 15, of approval for proposal from Remington and Vernick Engineers to complete additional field location and GIS mapping and provide field survey location services associated with the GIS sanitary water and stormwater utility infrastructure mapping for the remainder of Falls Town, of Township, Phase Four, Levittown within Falls Township. Mr. Tequita, this is something we've been mandated to do by the DEP, right?
It's not something that we've been mandated to do by the DEP, but we are working with TOFA to complete their survey of all the storm and sanitary in the township. This is the last 40% of the project, it's phases three and four. The total cost of the job would be $150,000.
Any comments from, public comment needed? Any board comment, Mr. Galloway?
None.
No comment.
I have none. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Item 16, consideration of approval for bid to purchase pool chemicals. This is pretty standard, we do it every year. Any questions or comments from the public? No? Any board comment or questions?
None.
None.
All right. Mr. Galloway, Mr. Andrews is here, but I don't know.
Pretty straightforward, ten years.
Is there a motion to buy chemicals that we need for the pools?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Sorry, I keep coming back and forth between you and Mr. Tequita.
You kept me up there.
I know, I'm sorry. Item 17, we have appointments to boards and commissions. We do have a letter of interest from Patty Powers for the TOFA board. I worked with Ms. Powers many years ago when I was on the zoning board. She was my mentor on that board. I'm sure she will be great for any board that we put her on, but it's great that she's interested in the TOFA board. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Patty Powers to the TOFA board.
And Mr. Dents, that will be via resolution.
Okay, and that'll be resolution number 15.
16.
My bad, 16. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Anybody else have any appointments? No?
Nope.
This is to the minutes from March 18th. Any errors or changes to the minutes?
No, I didn't see any.
It was just the three of us then, so, none. I'm okay with the minutes, excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen. With that, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Engineers' report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our engineers' report from the month of March shows that we had three new land developments submitted and one new earth disturbance. As usual, our highlights are identified in red text. There are no notable updates for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Jones?
None.
Any public comment? Is there, do we have to accept that? No, right. I take this to the bill list in 20, considering bills of $4,61,322.29. Any questions or comments on the bills?
No.
No? No hands? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Mr. Tequita, can you pull the board? I apologize.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
We have a bill list for Obermeyer, Reeburn, Maxwell, and Hippel for $8,113. Is there any questions or comments on this one? If not, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Mr. Tequita?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
That takes us to a Campbell Durant bill list in the amount of $34,731.55. Any public comment or comments on this bill list? Mr. Galloway?
None.
None. Is there a motion to pay this bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Mr. Tequita?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
That takes us to the Jones Engineering bill of $381,680.5. Is there any questions or comments on this bill list?
None.
No comment.
Is there a motion to pay the bill?
So moved.
Second.
You have something to say?
Mr. Dents, we dealt with this issue a few months back.
Just last month.
You normally abstain on these bills because you have a conflict of interest, which you have previously identified. But as we discussed last month, the law states that when an individual would be required to abstain, but by doing so, it would prevent the board from being able to take official action, that member is allowed to cast a vote as long as they reveal that they do have a conflict. You do have a conflict as you've previously disclosed, so you were able to vote on the bill list tonight, on the Jones Engineering bill list.
And yes, and I was a yes, so that, that was good, right?
Yep. I don't think we polled anyone.
Manager comment?
We haven't polled anyone yet.
Oh, go ahead and pull the board.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Manager comment?
No comment.
Board comment?
No comment.
No comment.
I have no comment. Yes, for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.